Okay, we come now to the last of our five interviews with Los Alameda Unified School District Candidates for the 2018 November 6th election. And my guest, my last and final guest.
Yeah.
Is Diana Hill. Welcome to our humble little studio here at Los AlumTV.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Diana, you've, you're no stranger to the district. You've been around, you've been a board member now for eight years?
That is correct.
Okay, not quite the longest board member.
I'm the most junior board member.
Most junior?
I am the most junior board member.
Okay, so you're the youngster over there.
I am.
Okay, alright. And you also are past president of LAEF, the Los Alameda Education Fund, a very important component of financial fundraising for Los Alameda's
Correct.
High school in particular, but also the other campuses as well, right?
It's for the whole district. It really does focus on the whole district. Life focuses, that's the one body that helps our whole district and has done a lot of work with STEAM and a lot of other things throughout our campus, so campuses.
Not the president anymore, but still very active, I understand.
Well, I have, they have a king and queen of hearts and I've been their queen of hearts candidate before. I think I've seen you at the fundraiser and so I've done that and, but being on the board, I can't take a position on that board any longer, but it's something very close to my heart. We started it many, many years ago, but I was president about 12 years ago and then my husband was also president of the foundation. So connecting to the community is very important to me.
Okay, alright. Well, I'm gonna let you connect with my first question.
Okay.
And I'll let you run with it.
Alright.
As I do with, have done with all the candidates so far. And that question, very generally speaking, is what makes you, in your mind, uniquely qualified to be re-elected to the Los Alameda Unified School District Board?
I think a passion for public education. Public education to me is one of the most important things that we do in this country. Also, a passion for our community and our district. We came, we, being my husband and I, moved to this district as
Randy, I'll say his name.
Randy, as many, many people do for the schools. That is why we moved into this community and it has given my children, both of them went from kindergarten all the way through high school, an incredible launching pad for their lives and they're very successful adults in many different ways. I don't just mean their jobs, I mean who they are as individuals, who they are as whole people, because we, we, the whole student is very important to us. I also think I'm very qualified because I've lived in this community for a long time. I have had children who have gone through, completely gone through the district. I have been part of a, very attached to the community, whether it's through life or we're gonna talk about Measure K back in the day, or I'm a board member of Pathways to Independence. I've, I've just done a lot of things within our community, booster clubs and a variety of different things. So I know our community really, really well.
Just having kids in the district going through the, you know, the grades up through K through 12, is that important? I mean, to getting insight into how the district works, how the district should work?
Um, I, I think that it's very helpful. I don't think it's necessary. Karen Russell is the only one on our board that has had, she has no children and she was past teacher, but she's had no students go through the district. Everybody else on our board has had students, as well as grants, some of them now grandchildren, go through the, go through the district. So I think that that's a helpful thing. Do I think it's an absolutely necessary thing? No. The job of the board is to set the mission and the vision of the district and to really hire and fire the superintendent. Those are our two big responsibilities and approve a budget and make sure that the money is being spent properly. So those are our big responsibilities. I think a lot, and certainly Mrs. Russell has a great deal of insight to things, but we really rely on our staff and our administration to look at curriculum. We rely on our parents, asking our parents what they want in school, in school site meetings. They have input. There's a lot of input that comes from a variety of different places to get us where we are. The board's real responsibility is mission, vision, hiring and firing the superintendent and then also approving the budget.
And approving little things like bond measures.
That is correct.
And we have a big one coming up.
We do.
And there's some buzz out there about it and I think I would be remiss if I did not bring out the point of Measure G, which is on the ballot in November. Folks are talking about it already. In fact, I have a copy of it here, if you'd like to refer to it.
That's awesome.
Tell me about the process and the necessity for arriving at the big decision for a $97 million bond, just 10 years after Measure K, which you were involved with
I was.
Also, to the tune of $126 million
Correct.
In a bond to the taxpayers of the district. Now comes a $97 million bond initiative, measure, and folks are asking the obvious questions. Why now? Is this gonna be the new norm? Are we gonna have a bond measure every 10 years? Is what I'm hearing out there on the street and in the social media threads that I have been following in the last few weeks. Can you talk to that?
I absolutely can and I'm, I'm very grateful that you asked that question. And first of all and foremost, one of the things that I'll say is that I'm not a huge proponent of bonds, but what I do believe in is that I do believe in local control. And so if, if I have a governing body and an administration that I know is gonna spend my money really well and I have local input on that, I'd rather it do that, be that way than it, than it go somewhere up to the state or to the federal government where I'm not gonna have control over it. So that bond, our citizens have had a lot of input into what we're doing and how we're doing it and they will continue to. There will be a citizens oversight committee. They will have meetings. They will look at all of the progress that is being done. So I think that's a really important thing that a lot of people miss. We modernized all of our elementary schools and our two middle schools. The only school we didn't was the high school.
Yeah, why was that? I mean, you were there, you were involved in Measure K.
I was, very much.
There was, and I and others have gone back to Measure K and looked at Measure K. There was very little in Measure K that indicated that the high school would not be part of that $126 million bond measure.
And that was
It was just, it was in the whole mix of all the other campuses as well and yet it got set aside. Why?
It didn't get set aside. There's only so many dollars and if we looked at
But at this point, you're saying we need a new bond primarily for the high school.
For the high school. Because when we went out
So why didn't the Measure K 10 years ago effectuate changes at the high school as well?
Because there wasn't enough money. You had $126 million and you can go back and you can talk to anybody on the citizen oversight committee and look at how well we spent that money. We got matching funds, I believe, over $30,000, $30 million on top of what we got for the 126. We went in originally looking at saying if we could modernize all of our elementary schools, we'd be winning.
You know, one of the, one of, one of the big shortfalls, if you will, in Measure K that didn't, that what Measure K did not address, and I get this all the time in talking to students especially who've been through it even recently, is particularly things like the science lab. And they say it just was, it's, it's, it's a mess. It's, it's woefully inadequate for the needs of a modern day science high school laboratory.
Absolutely. So we have 3,000 students at the high school. We have 7,000 students throughout our schools and, and other locations. So you're telling me that you would have preferred that, and how many of those students are actually hitting science? We want all of our students to hit science. What we did with Measure K is that we took that money and said, how many people can we affect? How many staff can we affect? How many students can we get air conditioning in every one of our classrooms so that our students are comfortable? We took that money from Measure K and said, okay, we, we recently built a new building at the high school. We did some little touch up and paint on some of the classrooms that we could do. At the high school, we also put in a brand new track and field when we had that Measure K money that was extra. We hit every campus with $126 million. That is a lot of work that was done and it was done in a very expedited fashion.
Is a 10-year bond, given the, the speed and the rate of technology development and obsolescence, especially in the tech fields?
Absolutely.
Is a bond every 10 years going to be the new normal?
I certainly hope not. I think that we didn't do anything for a very long time in this community and that was part of probably the shortfall, is that you know, if you and I have a home or a property and we know if we maintain that on a regular basis, we're going to be able to upkeep that and keep that in good shape. We had places, and I can't speak to it because I was not on the board during that period of time, but I know that there were, that, that money was not put back into some of the campuses probably the way it could have been. I'm not speaking badly about anybody. I don't know I wasn't on the board. All I know is I was a parent and I was looking at the classrooms that my students, my, my children were in at that point in time and I saw what those issues were. So it is not me as a personal board member, it is not a goal that we are going to have a bond every 10 years. I would, that, and one of the things that we're doing as a board is that we're saying we want to take a specific amount of money every year and we want to put it aside for maintenance and we wanna put it aside for any upgrades that we need to, to have as it comes into the future.
A set aside fund.
Exactly.
Was that done for Measure K?
It was, maintenance was, that was part of Measure K bond. Measure K bond said that there, that we wanted to, that there needed to be a certain amount that was, and you can't put that in the bond language, but the understanding was with the board that we would maintain these facilities as we had improved them, that we would maintain them. And if you look back at this board and what we've done, we have stayed very, very true to that.
Just now regarding Measure G.
Yes.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Will any of that 96 million, actually, at the end of the bond maturity, it'll, it'll be 209 million that the community, the taxpayers will have spent
Correct.
Over a period of what, 30 years?
Yes.
I think it's a 30-year bond. $209 million will be, will be drawn out of people's property taxes essentially. How much of that are you planning for a prudent set aside fund to carry on the maintenance and improvements beyond the 10, another 10 years so that we don't have to go back
So we can't
And have another bond in 10 years?
Right. We can't set aside that bond money. That bond money, now we can, what we do is, is that we don't have to, we get approval, right, to be able to issue bonds. So we've, let's say we get the work done with 70 million, right? And we don't, and so we, $26 million worth of bonds, we don't issue. And we've done that in the past. We don't issue, right? We don't have to issue because we got the work done with 70, then that, then that we could go to at some other point in time. It's not like you get a bucket of money. It doesn't work that way. You don't get all the money at the same time.
Because the money trickles in. It doesn't come in
It doesn't come in at all one time.
Like you said.
And being able to get that matching funds, being able to do projects quickly and be ready, we're already looking forward to what can we, what projects can we put into place right away so we can get that matching, those matching funds? Because that's money that our taxpayers won't pay for directly. It'll come from Sacramento. We all still pay for it one way or the other, right? But it's money that, that won't be attached directly to their properties.
Okay. Anyway, you fiscally add it up, it, it's a lot of money to be managed.
Correct.
And as you mentioned earlier, there is an oversight committee. I think in the ballot, they, they refer to it
It's a bond oversight committee.
As independent citizens oversight committee.
Correct.
For all of you that want to take a look at the ballot measure when it does come out. This oversight committee, I'm curious, it, well, it indicates in here, it stipulates that they must be, that among the members must be
Correct.
A taxpayer, a member of a taxpayer association, a member of a business organization, a senior citizen, a member of a senior citizen organization, and that no employees or vendors of the district can be on that oversight committee.
That is correct. I chaired that committee with, with Measure K until I began, until I got on the board. I was the chair.
Oh, I see. Okay. So who picks that committee?
We go out to the community.
Who's we?
The, the district will go out to the community.
The district?
The district. It's the district's responsibility.
District administration.
Yes, it's the district's
So that's Sherry Crop, the superintendent.
It would be probably more
And her staff?
Go to the CBO, yes. And they go out to the community and they open it up. If anybody wants to be on that committee, all they have to do is let us know. We are happy to be able to interview them, look at that process and then that committee is put together. They only
Is it an open vote process? I mean, is that voting process transparent? Is the community able to see how everybody votes and who they vote for?
If, I'm not sure that they can see who is voted for. It's not, I was on the other end, so I will tell you that I am, I don't know how I got chosen. I know I went through an interview process and then I was
Chosen.
I was chosen to be the chair.
So will there be a general call out to the community to participate in this process as a volunteer, a member of this committee?
Absolutely.
Oversight committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright. Well, very important to the community. People are already chafing a little bit at it online and social media and saying that, look, that's 300, gonna be $340 out of my pocket, you know, additional in my property taxes every year. That's a big piece of my property tax. That's a big bump.
But I would also say that when you have the number one school district in the county and people move to this, as we have talked about, my husband is a broker in the area. I know what people do to get into this community because of the schools. I know how their property values are much higher than there are in other areas. That's what they're paying for, that's what they're paying forward.
Well, okay, partly. But you know, if you're in the real estate, you know, you know what the real estate people say, location, location, location. We're right between two major thoroughfare freeways and so there are other factors too besides the school district.
Absolutely.
But certainly the school district is a big factor for a lot of people.
It is a big factor for a lot of people.
But those same families that are moving in, especially more recently, their assessed valuation on their property taxes is gonna be relatively higher than people who've lived here for 30 years.
That's correct.
And certainly more than the senior citizens that are in the area.
That's correct.
And they're gonna be hit the hardest and even by Sherry Crop's own calculations, over $300 per assessed valuation for the average taxpayer.
And they, and they will be the ones
So it's a serious decision on the part of the voters on November 6th.
It is, absolutely. And they will be the ones that will be using the schools more often and they will also, they are also our community assets. And I go back to that. If you look at how often our schools are used as community assets for kids to practice on, for games to happen on, if you look at all of those things, that's a really, for open green space in our communities, those are all very important things to a community.
Well, the public, the, the Arts Center, the PAC, our, our major venue for all kinds of campus and even off-campus events are conducted there.
Absolutely.
But, you know, people have asked that question too. Is part of this Measure G, in this Measure G, could it, could it transpire that the PAC would get, would be renovated, rehabbed, or even demolished for a new center?
It will
Under this, under this measure?
It will depend on, the number one thing, the most important thing that we are doing at the high school, that are, is the first thing that we need to do, is that one, we need to do the infrastructure at the, at the high school. You realize that if something electrical happens in one room and electricity has to be turned off, the whole high school has to be turned off. There are not panels for individual buildings.
Subpanels.
The whole high school has to be turned off.
There aren't subpanels for each building?
There are not.
Okay.
Okay? So that, that is a real issue that has to be dealt with and with the technology that we're using today, that has to be done. So all of the infrastructure has to be done. The next thing that is really a priority is getting that building that is for science and technology and for STEAM and for all of the new incredible things that we're doing at the district. So that has to be done. Once that is done and, and looking at how well and how well we can manage the money, how well we can get matching funds, what other things we will do, I really do, I challenge people to go back and look at Measure K and look at what we first said we would do with Measure K and how many more sites we hit, how many more things we did, because the money was exceptionally well managed. The funds were, were matched. We used state funds. So you can't do that. We can't just say we want a science and technology building, so the state of California give us $50 million. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna say, you spend this amount of money and then we'll give you some money back.
So there may be some leverage in the bond in getting matching money from the state?
Absolutely. And so the, the better that we can do that and the faster that we can do that, the more that we can do and get done.
But one last question, then we're gonna have to move on.
And that would be a really great thing, so.
This half hour isn't just about Measure G.
Good.
But, but people have made the, have taken your challenge and they have gone back and looked at Measure K 10 years ago, 126 million bond, and then looked at Measure G proposed now on November 6th for $97 million and have said, there's, both of these documents are, are suspiciously in their minds, similar in that they are essentially pretty vague. They don't identify specifically, specific projects or specific infrastructure improvements. And in that sense, people are a little schizy about another bond that is of a general and non-specific nature that only in the minds of the board members and probably the superintendent know precisely and some other staff members exactly where that money is gonna go, but it's not being percolated down through the ballot measure itself, which is essentially very broad.
Well, and you realize that that's a very limited document.
Yeah, there's only so much you can put in.
There's only so much that you can put in there. And that if we also say very specific things and then we wanna go broader and be able to do things and have that flexibility, we don't have that. We're very clear in that measure that it is for infrastructure at the high school. We're very clear in that measure that we wanna do some additional things at our elementary school. We're very clear in that measure that we need to have a, a building for STEM and all of those things. If we get all of those things done and additional matching funds, we'll just keep adding the projects to make the very best that we can possibly make.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, but I stand, I'm not sorry. I stand on what we did with Measure K. I stand on how well we spent that money and how many projects and how many additional projects we got done that could have never been taken into consideration because of the way we managed the money, the way that we used matching funds and the way that we worked with partners to get that done.
Okay, alright. Enough said on Measure G.
Thank you.
We have to move on. And certainly another issue that is maybe even just as important as, as Measure G, as, as taking money out of taxpayers' pockets, property owners' pockets for Measure G.
It's investing in their assets.
Gotcha. And let's hope the science labs are in there somewhere if it gets passed.
That's what the building is for.
Okay, alright. But moving on from Measure G, another issue that's of tantamount importance to parents certainly, and as it turns out, students themselves, as I gather when I, when I survey student population over there and talk to kids that come through the studio here and are out here in the middle school, I see them all the time and talk to them. So I've, I've been out there listening very attentively. They're scared. The kids are scared. I know the parents are.
Yep.
Every time they drop their kids off at school.
Right.
Talk to some of them too.
Right.
What's going on in this country is something I don't understand. I don't know if you do or not, but I don't understand a
I certainly have
Shooting a week on campuses in the United States. Every week, 24 shootings through the month of May, and of course, school gets out in June, but while school is in session, 24 shooting, one for, more than one for every week on some campus in the United States, some child is shot dead or wounded seriously by a shooter.
And, and not only students, also staff. It, it's a very, it's a very important issue.
So let's talk nuts and bolts of security.
Okay.
What has the board come up with? What is the approach of the board towards security on campuses, at all, all the campuses and at the high school?
Well, and I think that security runs a lot farther than just putting up fences.
Sure.
So, so we have put up fences. We're in the middle of putting in a security system. We have a small security system at the high school that will increase. It's our largest campus. We also are putting in a video security system down at McGaw. It will be connected to the police station. We have a great relationship with them. So those are some, a couple of the physical things. We also are at a place where we are, and, and I would make an appeal to every parent out there. We ask everybody who comes on our campus to go into the office and to make sure that they're identified. And I know that it may be a little inconvenient and you just wanna drop this off or you're running late to work in so-and-so's classroom, but please, please, we ask our staff to do that. We ask anybody who comes on campus. We have a great security system so we can swipe everybody in and swipe them in quickly. They can wear cards that identify them to anybody else. That's one of the most important things that parents can do, is make sure that they take the time to be identified when they come onto the campus. So then we know if there's somebody on campus who's not identified, we can instantaneously tell that there's an issue. So we're doing that at all of our campuses. We're doing fencing, but we're doing a lot more than that as well. It's also really important, the mental health of our students. It's important for us to watch social media and if any, we have systems in place and are, are getting even more robust systems in place, and I'm not a techie person, so I, I can't give you the nuts and bolts if you want them, call Mr. Sopranos, call Dan Bennett, they will give you that. Call Chris Vlasic. He's the first one that people should call to ask what is going on with safety. We have these technologies where we are seeing if somebody is making a threat. We say, see something, say something. If somebody says something, says something
What do they do if they see something and they wanna say something? What do they do?
We have, we have numbers that they can text, we have numbers that they can call that are monitored 24 hours a day.
Are they?
Yes.
Is there a hotline?
There is a hotline.
Can you give me that number?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm sure we can get it to you. We have those systems
That hotline is operational right now?
Melissa Davis is the one that will get those calls. We have those systems in place. We message that we have those things. We message that we have them to parents and to staff. We do that on a consistent basis. This is a large community. And so if, if you look at the newspaper, we put out, we have a, we have a committee that does nothing but safety. We have, anybody is welcome to come and be part of that committee. I, I hear all the time that we're not transparent, that we do things behind closed doors. And, and I'm gonna say to you, that is not the case. Reach out to one of us. We will answer your email. We will direct you to the right committee. We will direct you to the right place to have heard what you need to have heard.
To, to the students themselves, fences, as I, as I listen to them and hear what they're saying, they're saying fences aren't gonna make me safe.
Absolutely. That's why we have the technology to see what's happening with them. That's why we have counselors. That's why we've added more counselors. We've added more mental health professionals.
At the high school level?
At the, at all levels.
How many counselors at the middle school level?
We have a counselor at each middle school.
One?
Has, has a counselor and then we also have a mental health professional that works between both of them. We keep adding every year. In the last four to five years, you know, a lot of people say, oh, well, we saw these staff cuts and so and so forth. We were in the middle of a recession and our budget was cut dramatically. And so we had to make decisions and it's not an easy decision, but we had to make decisions. We cut, we cut administration, we had to end up cutting counselors, we've added counselors back at the high school.
What's the population of Oak? About a thousand?
Correct.
About thirteen hundred at McCalla?
No, they're, they're very similar right now.
Oh, are they?
Yes. So they're both around the same.
So you've got a ratio of about thirteen hundred to one of, of student body to counselor at the middle school?
Well, yes, but we also have additional help there as well.
We do.
So yes, we have mental health professionals that we've been hiring to help with our student population. But the student population has.
What, what is their designation, their job designation over there, these mental health professionals?
We have mental health professionals throughout the district.
On call or?
On, on, that are part of our district that can go to different sites as they're needed and as they're requested. And we also have tremendous relationships with partnerships with a lot of other mental health, um, uh, programs and facilities. I just did, if you watched the, um, board meeting, I just highlighted a website that we have, that we put in front of our whole families where if people have questions about mental health issues or they have questions about suicide or they want to get, um, they want to get help, they can reach out to this independent website to help and we pay for that to help get help.
Well, I think it'd be a great public service if you could give me that website right now and people could, could have it.
I will make sure that you have that back. You're, you're asking a lot of somebody who, um, is, is a board member. And now I work forty to sixty hours a month for this board, but I get paid two hundred and fifty dollars a month. I have a full-time career. I'm part of a variety of other boards. So as I said from the beginning, we set the mission and the vision and we trust staff.
So if you don't, if you don't know the website off, off by heart, if you could give it to me maybe after the show or today.
Sure. We'll get you those resources.
I'll put it on, I'll put it at the end of the show in our credits. So if you're interested in that website, um, members of the community, you can have that.
And you know, they can go to our website, losal.org and find all this information.
Okay, fair enough. All right. But back to the question of the mental state of our campuses and what, what the kids are going through. Um, I've talked to kids out there that are, you know, there's all, perennially, there's this issue of bullying on campuses. At all campuses, I imagine, and, and for all time, that there's that issue.
Yeah. It's not new, it's just different how they do it.
But I've talked to kids who've said, and recently, yeah, I, I got bullied. I've been bullied. I've, I've been slapped in the head all through this semester and, and I went to my counselor. I tried to get to my counselor and I made an appointment and I got an appointment and, you know, thirty days later. And, you know, by that time, you know, the issue's over. Uh, and with, you know, especially, and this is very prominent, the middle schools, that age, I suppose. But with one counselor for thirteen hundred kids, I mean, how, that's going to be a terribly overburdened counselor. I don't, I wouldn't want that job. Um, and the kids say that they, they don't, they're not, they don't have access to that counselor, at least in a timely manner, they say.
But there's also support staff. They could go to their principal. They could go to their vice principal. That's what those people are there for. That's what they're there for.
I don't think, I don't, I don't know that the kids feel that they have that option, at least as they explain it to me.
Okay. Well, then we need to do a much better job of communicating that to them. We need to make them feel that that staff, any member of that staff at the middle school is there to support them. Any member. I had, I recently talked to a counselor at the high school who told me about a student who came in who was going through some difficult times and the resources that they could give them. There is nothing more important to our, any member of our staff than a student who is struggling, whether it's academically or whether it is with, with issues related to bullying or mental health or problems at home. We have a legal responsibility. We have a moral responsibility to answer those questions as soon as possible. So it's not just about the counselor or getting in touch with the mental health professional. They should be able to get in touch with their, their administration, their counselor, their, their principal.
They could go to the principal.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's what they're there for. And I will tell you them, that our principals at the middle school are incredibly warm and welcoming to their students. And all a student would have to do is walk up to them.
Yeah. You know, in, okay, and that's, that's good to know. And for all you kids out there that are being bullied, please go to your principal. Um, our, our board member has said so.
And absolutely. And also have their parent reach out to, reach out to the administration. If they don't get any answer from the administration, reach out to the superintendent. I will tell you that Dr. Krapp responds to all of our emails and phone calls. If, if you still want to go further, reach out to a board member. That's what we're there for.
Well, a, and as you know, that, I mean, there's another layer of anxiety. I mean, if it isn't tough enough on kids, uh, you know, taking four or five AP classes and trying to get that, those grade point averages up and get college bound and so forth. And then just the, the peer pressure of middle school and high school and even grammar school now. Um, there is this overlay that we could only describe as political on campuses that's happening where I've heard stories of kids being, being told, because they are, uh, uh, you know, dark-skinned, Latino, being told, hey, um, where's your green card? Or hey, are you legal? I mean, kids do, kids, kids are cruel.
They can be.
But there's another level. There's something else going on right now and it's, it's reflective of the overall political environment. I want to address that for just a moment because it's something that doesn't get talked about very much and the kids are reluctant to talk about it unless you press them because it's painful in a lot of cases for them. Um, and these kids are being, now the bullying is taking on, in some sense, racial overtones, uh, as I mentioned earlier. Are you aware of that?
Of course I'm aware of that.
And what, is the board and administration pivoting and redirecting to address that?
So we've directed that, we, we, that is a directive from us from the beginning. We have something that's called Peace Week. We work very hard at having processes for our students to be able to be inclusive, not exclusive. We have programs within our system where we do that on a regular basis. And we talk to students individually. I cannot talk about individual student matters. I can't do that about that or about personnel. I legally cannot do that. But I will tell you that all of those that are come, that, that come to, um, the attention of administration, the attention to the, of the board, that those are all directly handled, those individual things. And the bigger environmental issue that we're dealing with, we work very hard with our programs and with our staffs.
I'm sorry, the bigger environmental issue?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, in, of the environment of, of the culture of the school that you're discussing.
Yes.
Is, um, is dealt with in ways of where we put programs forward. We have so many clubs and are so inclusive at the high school that if you have a club at the high school that you want to spear, um, spearhead, you have to find a faculty member to help you. And it is an open opportunity to do and say what, what, what you feel is important. And to be able, we have the Model United Nations. We have, um, Griffins with a Mission. We have Peace Week. There, I could go on and on about the different programs that we have culturally to help our students be inclusive.
Along the lines of the politicization of, of campus and the, the kids are feeling it, as I, as we talked about earlier, um, it's, it's unavoidable. You know, they hear it around the dinner table, if there is such a thing as a dinner table anymore. Uh, they, they get a lot of it from their parents, I know. But this country is stratifying in a very dangerous way. Um, I see it at the local level. I see it on many of the local boards. I see conflict even among people who've cooperated with each other for years and years and years. At the high school, um, one of, one of the conflicts that has come to the surface is how to address the issue of global warming. And the way it's been dealt with by the board, uh, in terms of a class curriculum, is it has been decided that the issue of global warming is represented in the classroom in science classrooms shall be represented as a controversial subject. That's how it's been for quite a few years now. And I understand, uh, that it, that, from Dr. Barki and, and others, that it's, it's still labeled, uh, this earth, some of these earth science classes, uh, at the high school level are still labeled as quote controversial classes and therefore must be presented, must be brought before the board. And the board must determine that they are controversial. And, and so in other words, I, I guess a syllabus must be brought forward. And that, and that to establish that global warming and man-made participation.
I'm sorry, but this is.
Let me finish.
Yes.
That man-made responsibility to global warming, uh, is a, is not settled science and that it is controversial. Is that in fact the truth?
No. I will tell you what the process is.
Okay.
We have an AP environmental science class. When that class was brought to us to approve, we said, we want to see what the curriculum will look like and we want to make sure that it is balanced because there are opinions on both sides. No matter what you believe, there are opinions on both sides. And we want our students to be critical thinkers. That's what the goal is. If you don't give them all of the information, they can't learn to think through it. So we want them to have both sides of it so that they can learn and think through that. That curriculum came forward. We looked at it. We felt that it was giving us the correct balance and it's never been back to the board. So.
Now, let, let me intervene just a second.
There's a real big process.
I'm not saying that all classes must go before the board for their curricular, you know, uh, uh, stamp of approval. I'm just talking about this one class or a series of classes, earth science classes.
It's not earth science. It's called environmental, it's an AP environmental science class.
Yes. Okay, so it's an honors class.
Correct.
Yeah. And, uh, but I'm told by teachers that they have to take this class or have had to take this class before the board to justify it and that it is truly, I guess, balanced, that it presents both sides.
Um, the, when we first, when we first approved of the class, that is correct.
Okay. It's troubling to me. I'll be honest with you. It's troubling that a aspect of science that is largely settled science, ninety-seven percent of scientists do agree that global warming is at least largely man-made. And that at least we have an opportunity to do something about mitigating it. And to call it unsettled science, um, when even.
And I'm sorry, I, I, I am not aware of that. And, and if you ask me what we do, look at our campuses and what we do for recycling. Look at what we do. Every one of our campuses have incredible recycling programs. We absolutely teach our children that we care about the earth and that we want to take care of this planet that we call ours. And so we put in curriculum all the way starting in kindergarten, things that we can do that we can be really good to our planet and what we can do. That's the best way to absolutely teach our students how to do that and how to be the best citizens that they can be.
But a science class should be teaching science, should be teaching the prevailing theories.
I am not a science teacher.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that science teachers have told me that they had to go before the board and present their curriculum to, with the, with the inference from the board that it needed to be fair and balanced.
I think any curriculum should be balanced.
Well, when, when you're teaching science, science is science. And although there's, there's no absolutes in science for us as, as human beings, scientists would be the first one to admit that.
Absolutely.
There is a predominance of, of opinion and that's a, that's pretty strongly in favor of global warming and that it is largely man, or to a great extent, man-made.
And I go back to that we, from the time our students are in kindergarten, teach them how to take care of this beautiful planet that we have.
That's not the same issue. The issue is, do you want, do we, do we teach it as, as settled science or do we teach it as just another theory? And I think it's a little late in the game to be talking about global warming, sitting in this hot studio on a hot day where temperatures are spiking even now, to be talking about global warming as a potential theory, as just another theory, uh, to be balanced off with, uh, you know, other economic interests. So, but in the interest of giving you this platform and giving you the last word in this conversation, I'd like to do so and ask you, what do you think are the pressing issues? If you're re-elected on November sixth, that you'll be facing for two thousand and nineteen as a board member of the Los Alamos Unified School District?
Well, I feel that, um, I think our district does incredible work. And I think that we take really good care of our staff across the board. And that as, as a board, you can see what our mission and vision is. And every school that you go to, everybody that you talk to within our district keeps to that. We keep the main thing, the main thing. So, um, what are the controversial issues that are going to come up in nine, in two thousand and nineteen?
Well, not necessarily controversial, but important issues that need to be addressed right away.
And, and, and what it is, is keeping our board moving forward, being able to keep doing the great work that we're doing with all of the budget changes that we get. We didn't talk about the budget or school finance at all, which is a very complicated issue to people. Being able to make sure that we do that, that we give our students and our staff the very best tools that they can do to work forward, to be, to be up and coming as we go into, um, into the next school year. I believe that we will be, um, negotiating with our, our teachers, um, next year. And we use a process called IBB that I think is very, very important. It's, it is very, um, it, it is collaborative and, and.
Can you just tell me what IBB stands for?
Uh, inter-based bargaining.
Okay.
And so we are very collaborative in what we do in our district. Um, our, our administration, our teachers, our custodians, all of our staff are very important to us on how we run as a family. We are the Los Al family and we do a very good job of what we do. And there is always room for improvement. Absolutely, there's room for improvement. But I really believe that this board has done a great job in taking our students and our population and our community forward into the, into the next segment of where we're doing. I think our superintendent is, is amazing at what she's done. She is extremely driven, um, and, and driven for the right reasons. It's about children. It's about giving students all the opportunities that they could possibly wish for. She always says, and I believe very strongly in this, is that we want to give to every student in this district the opportunity that every parent would want for them. And so whether that's holding them by the hand, whether that's giving them intervention, whether that's giving them mental health, um, help, whether, whatever that is for a student to be able to succeed, that's what this district wants to be able to provide.
Okay. Let's say you make the grade on November sixth. You're re-elected for your ninth year on the board. What are the first and most prioritized? And let's say that Measure G has passed. What are, have you, do you have, have you prioritized as yet what the first, uh, projects are going to be? What the first addressing?
Yes, I think I've been very clear throughout this whole time.
What are you going to go after first?
The infrastructure is first and then.
The electrical.
Correct. And then the science and the, our STEM building.
Okay.
For our science techni, not, and technology building.
And, and, and the science labs.
Yeah, that's that, they're included in that building.
All right, okay. We have to stop there. I could keep on going.
Great.
But, um, and I would love to talk about financing of the district, but there just isn't time today. And this is about your reelection campaign and, and, and letting the viewers see who you are in, in an elongated discussion and I appreciate that very much.
No problem.
And thank you for participating, uh, in this discussion and good luck to you on November sixth.
Thank you very much, John.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well, I'm very pleased to be able to have in the studio all of the candidates for Los Alamos Unified School District here on Backstory. Um, hot as it has been in the midsummer heat, um, they've been, uh, very accommodating and I appreciate all five of them coming in and spending the time with us, uh, here on Backstory for Los Alamos Unified School District Board Elections on November sixth. I hope that we have given you a little more than just, um, a couple of facts and figures about who these folks are and, um, it's up to you to decide. And I also want to thank my crew here at Los Al TV. Uh, Jeffrey, Lucas and Duncan, on this particular production for sticking with me and, uh, through the heat. And, uh, without these guys, uh, these kinds of public service productions would not be possible. I just couldn't do it on my own. So I, I want to give a little shout out to my crew and, and let them know how much I appreciate them and, uh, uh, thank them very much for that. And thank you, viewers, uh, for participating. I want you to know that this program can be viewed on Los Al TV coming, coming up. And, um, look to the local news enterprise for listings and schedules for the program, uh, on our broadcast side. And on the internet, you can also go to losaltv.org and you'll be able to, uh, see all of these interviews back to back if you like, or you may be able to link to and select each one individually. So please be apprised of that and take advantage of that, you voters, uh, out there who have some big decisions to make on November sixth. So for Backstory, I'm John Underwood and, uh, be sure to vote. So for Backstory, I'm John Underwood and, uh, be sure to vote.